I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Jerry. Okay. Good. I think so. I think, good. You're welcome. Okay, so, um, first item on the agenda is, um, public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Thank you. Okay, next is the Board and Committee reports. I signed the PR 2317 for Julie O'Brien, the PR 2318 for Julie O'Brien, and the PR 2318 for the Select Board. Under Grants, Gifts, and Donations, we have a council on aging, a generous council on aging donation from Bill and Jerry De Mayo for $500. May I entertain a motion?
I motion to accept the donation from Bill and Jerry De Mayo for $500 to the COA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Thank you, Bill and Jerry De Mayo.
You're supposed to do it at the end of the year, though, for the tax write-off for last year.
Not when you run it through the Select, man, you do it now.
That's just a joke.
This is fiscal year. And what's your like?
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Under New Business, Dave Hill, the new president of the Byfield Community Arts Center, is here, and he's going to introduce himself to the board. Come on up, Dave.
How's everybody doing, Dave?
Good.
All right. So, do you want me to just kind of give a background?
Yeah, give a little background and where you're at, where you were, and where you're at, and where you want to go.
Okay. So, um, again, my name is Dave Hill. I grew up at 77 Main Street in Byfield. I was the last class to go through the, uh, the Yellow School.
Oh, wow.
So, I attended first and second grade at the Yellow School. Um, and right shortly after that, they did the renovations on the, um, the Round School and built it out. Uh, so...
What year?
It's hard for me to date that, but it was, so, on that note, I can say that I graduated Triton in 2006.
Yep, good luck.
So, I graduated Triton 2006.
Probably the late 1990s, early...
Yeah, so, I remember our, we started second, uh, we started second grade in the Byfield, uh, the Yellow School. And then they moved us to a trailer behind the Round School while they were finishing the renovations, and then we were, uh, so, my second grade class was the first class to go into the development behind the Round School. Um, so, that's, that's my history on, you know, growing up in Byfield. Um, so, since then, you know, so, I graduated in 2006 from Triton High School. Um, after that, I, um, sorry, I'm trying to get my notes together in my head, but...
That's okay.
So, anyways, so, following graduating Triton High School in 2006, I, I got a degree from, uh, Boston University. I have a communications degree with a focus in, uh, audio production.
Okay.
Thanks, Lance. Good to know.
Yeah, so, in 2012, it was about 2012, I believe, I got involved with the Byfield Community Arts Center and the organization, um, as it was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and at that point, Heidi Fram, I believe you guys all know Heidi.
You know Heidi.
Heidi and I had co-founded the Byfield Music and Arts Festival, uh, which we did for several years, and...
That was big.
It was great, and we would love to bring that back at some point, but it's, uh, it's kind of on the back burner right now. Um, so, since 2012, um, I've, I've been continually involved with the Byfield Community Arts Center. I've come in and out of the board, um, throughout those years. Um, and then, just this past year, uh, well, several years ago, I think it was probably 2021, I rejoined the board. Um, and at that point, I spent a lot of, and you guys are aware of the, you know, the construction project that happened within there. We had the crack themes.
Yeah.
We had to go through all that, um, and which actually, in a weird way, linked up with the, the whole COVID thing.
Yeah.
Because we were able to get that project done when we weren't really allowed to operate anyways. Um, and they, they did a great job. Everything was, was great. Um, so, I came back on board, um, in, in 2021, um, on the Board of Directors as Vice President, and at that point, I brought in, I had spent a lot of time doing, uh, writing up private grants, and we brought in about $40,000 in private grants during that time. I, I mean, I say "we," but I brought in, uh, about $40,000 in private grants, and that allowed us to, all of that was allotted to upgrade the technology within the space and within the organization to bring us current to what we need to provide for these community groups, for the theater programs, for the music programs, whatever. So, at this point now, we've put in about $25,000 in a new lighting system in there, um, which has been awesome. Um, and then, the rest of that has been spent on bringing in high-speed internet, uh, point-of-sale equipment to be able to keep up with, like, when we do liquor licenses and stuff like that, to be able to, you know, have point-of-sale equipment for the bar. Um, we've done a couple of other things. The, the, the audio has been upgraded to modern audi, like, audio technology. All of this technology upgrades is necessary to, to keep us current with what needs to happen, to keep program, like, uh, the programming and the, the support from these community groups to continue to do the, the theater, the art, the music performances and all that, because, because the place was really just kind of stagnant for a little, like, a while.
Yeah, and then COVID hit.
Yeah, and, and then COVID hit, and that, we were shut down for a long time, so, um, so, that's what I focused on during that. Um, and then we came back with a, a huge push. Um, it's been awesome lately. So, like, in the past year, we've done a, we've, up, we've actually installed all that equipment, and it's, it's there. It's, it's being done, it's being used, uh, it's created excitement, it's created, um, more support. Uh, we, I'm getting emails every day of people that want to get involved, um, that includes community theater groups, art groups, uh, musicians, and, uh, my, you know, my favorite part is getting the, the high school group involved, because we've seen so many budget cuts in the, the, the programming in the high school.
Yeah.
So...
Program cuts.
Yeah, there's so many program cuts, and we're trying to offset that and bring them in here so that we can do a Battle of the Bands, like, we used to do Battle, like, when I was in high school, we'd do the Battle of the Bands and all that stuff, and, like, encourage the kids to start, starting bands, and, you know, it's, we, we, we need that happening. Um, so, anyways, so, that being said, after my graduate, so, I'll, I'll keep on, uh, like, who I am, you know, so, following high school, like, I, I have a degree, uh, from Boston University. Um, it's a communications degree with a focus in audio production. Um, the company that I run as a, my full-time job is called Fusion Blue Productions, and we provide audio, video, and lighting, production and installation services to, you know, venues all over the area. Um, so, I'm trying to use my resources to help this organization.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I think I had already said, like, previously, I came back on as Vice President of the Board.
Yeah.
So, as of 2023, I came in as President of the Board of Directors for the Byfield Community Arts Center. Um, and I, I basically cleaned house on the whole thing. Um, we, we built a, a great new board, and, uh, I can list those board members if you guys want to know who they are.
I mean, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, so...
Do you want to tell us who they are? If you want to tell us?
I, I can, if you would like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we have Charlie Carozo, Officer, Greta Schaefer, Officer, um, Sean Gobbo is our Secretary, and we brought in Ryan Sturgis as the new Treasurer, which has been huge. Um, and then myself as President of the organization. Um, one of the first things I did was just completely do an audit of the entire organization. So, I had Ryan, who we brought in as the Treasurer. He has done a great job as completely auditing the whole organization. There was some stipulations and some weird stuff going on. Uh, I think, you know, you and I had discussed when I saw you...
The filings, yeah.
Yeah.
Your current note without all your filings?
So, Ryan went in and he tore everything apart. Um, we are now current in, in, uh, in a good position with the state and the federal with filing.
Good.
Um, and he has pulled apart a, a complete, uh, financial situation and audited it and to a place where now we can realize, like, okay, this is where we have to go to complete the, uh, you know, to continue the organization, to keep it on track. This is how we have to spend, this is what we can pay out for artists and all that, and, um, he, he's done a great job at making sure that we can make this organization grow and continue our mission.
Okay. And what is your mission? Do you know off the top of your head?
So, our mission is to promote and, uh, so, to promote the community through and with the arts, and that's, that's been the mission of the organization from the start, and that's something that we could plan to continue.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that. Any questions from the Board? Comments? Jerry? Ted?
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Um, we do, I think I mentioned to you before about liquor, liquor licenses. If you can get them to us, the sooner the better.
Yep, and I got a, I got a bunch coming at you soon.
Okay. I mean, you know when they, you know, you don't, you know when you, you don't know what's coming at you, but, you know...
Yeah, so, I, I, that's another thing. I've been trying to organize, like, organize all of that in a, a better way than it's been dealt with before.
Okay. Well, Julie is the one that you'll work with, and she'll help you, too.
Okay.
Who was, uh, who was band director when you were at Triton?
What was that?
Who was the director of the band when you were at Triton?
Uh, that would be Sue Detschler.
She was, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't Bob?
And she's actually retiring this year.
She is, yeah. My kids were, trying to gauge when my kids were in there, because it was actually Manso and who was it?
Yeah, Bob Manso.
So, when I graduated, when I graduated from Triton, Bob Manso ended up being the...
Yep.
The...
The principal.
The principal, yeah.
Yeah.
He was, he was our principal.
Was he principal when you were there? Bob Manso, yeah.
And they've been, they've been great to deal with, uh, my, my company actually did the, the graduations for them during COVID. We livestreamed all that stuff and...
Oh, yeah, in Salisbury, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, we did Salisbury, and then we actually livestreamed out of the field in Triton.
Yeah.
The following year, but...
The following year, okay.
So, anyways, it's, it's, uh, it's a pleasure to meet all of you guys.
Yeah. We're here if you need us.
I look forward to working with you guys. I look forward to serving the community. I look forward to serving the citizens of Newbury, and most of all, I look forward to continuing our mission, which is to promote community through and with the arts.
Great.
Awesome. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Okay. We have a business license renewal for James Bradshaw. That's DBA Plum Island Provisions at 29 Plum Island Boulevard, Common Victular, and I believe you guys are here. Come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Danielle.
Hi, Danielle.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um...
Oh, wait a second. Motion to approve, just a minute.
Yeah. There's a motion to approve a business license?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All right, discussion, yes. Good night, Dave.
Take care.
You want to tell us a little bit about, you're on TV, so you'll have a little advertising here, so...
Okay.
Tell us about your business.
So, we've decided to take over Plum Island Provisions on Plum Island.
Congratulations.
Thank you, very excited. We've both been in the restaurant industry for a very long time. I ended up leaving it for a while to go to Ipswich and work in the cafeteria, where my kids have been at Triton.
Yeah.
And, um, my husband was in finishing contract work, so, it's always been our dream to do something with food, and this opportunity came up, and we live on Plum Island, and we know that there's kind of a need for it, and they kind of got away from doing a really good job, keeping their hours, so we're hoping to turn that back and make it a positive experience for our family as well as Plum Island.
Well, good luck.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the Board?
While we're on TV, you want to tell people where you're exactly located, so...
Yeah.
People from the main will know, too.
Um, we're located across from Sarf Land, Bait and Tackle, right on Plum Island, where you can stock and get some yummy food to go to the beach.
Before you go to the beach, good.
29 Plum Island Boulevard.
That's it, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Is it Boulevard or Turnpike?
It says 29 Plum Island Boulevard.
I see it written two different ways everywhere.
I think it's the Turnpike until it gets onto the island, then it changes to the Boulevard.
Yeah, I think it's once you hit the intersection, it turns into Boulevard.
People will know your name anyway.
They see it two different places, that it's, it's 29 Boulevard or Turnpike.
It's like South Street changes to North Street in Georgetown, it's kind of similar to that. Then it goes to Main Street, and, okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Good question.
Thank you.
Do you guys have a website?
Um, we do, we're working on refreshing that. We do, yeah.
Okay.
That's awesome. So, we can check you out?
Yeah, yeah, we'd love that.
Check you out.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, good luck. I'm going to recuse myself from the next one, because she's my dentist. Excuse me?
You ready, J.R.?
I am. Robin Davies, DBA Parker Revival Dental, Three Kent Way General Business.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We have a public property use request for Rich Morrell, the Ucan Sports, the Half Marathon Road Race on October 15th, 2023, as well, I'll take them together, as well as a 5K Road Race on April 16th, July 16th, and October 1st, and I believe he's here. Hi.
Motion to approve both dates.
Second.
Second.
I'll be quick, because I know you guys are busy. I actually have a similar history. It was funny to hear Dave talk. I grew up on Main Street, went to the Yellow School, graduated from Triton, and now organize the Ucan Road Races. I'm a little bit older than him, so don't make me say when I graduated.
Yeah, no, we won't.
So, we do the, the three 5K races that, um, go down Scotland Road and then do a quick turnaround on the cul-de-sac and head back into Newbury Port, and then the Half Marathon in October goes down Scotland Road, uh, to what I used to call Great Rock, and heads out to West Newbury around the reservoirs, and then heads back the same way into Newbury Port again. Uh, we've been doing these for a few years now, and, uh, fingers crossed, they continue to go well.
Yeah.
But happy to answer any questions if anybody has any...
And I'm sure you already know not to paint the road.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put up, um, lots of signs the day before and take them down right after the races. We actually have a car that follows the last runners and takes signs down, so...
Even better.
Perfect.
Be smooth.
Oh, one second, Leslie.
Sure.
Um, any questions from the Board? Who are you raising money for?
Uh, we're for-profit.
Oh, you're a for-profit one?
This is, this is what I do.
Okay.
It's a crazy, crazy way to make a living.
Leslie, did you have a question? That was your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that's different, then.
Any, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Actually, can, can you elaborate for-profit for what?
Uh, this is my job. This is what I do for work.
But I mean, this particular race is a for-profit for...
It's how he makes a living.
Yeah, it's how he makes his living.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm always happy to make contributions to the community. Um, again, growing up in Byfield, I have a soft spot, so...
Okay.
You know, when we do races, we do races all over the North Shore, so, we're in Newbury Port, we're in Gloucester, and Rockport, Ipswich, Hamilton, you name it. Um, always happy to make contributions, so if, um, there's a need, the Little League or Triton or you name it, um, we're happy to help.
All right. We'll reach out. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Well, thank you, sir.
Thanks so much. Appreciate you putting me on the agenda.
Yeah, good luck with the races. Okay, now, we have a public property use request for Michelle Abram at the Byfield Coffee Company, um, by Coco Manta Fields at the parking area from March 15th to December 1st.
Motion to approve.
Question?
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jerry?
Um, didn't we just approve this at our last meeting?
This one...
That was approved for the...
This is at Manta Field.
Yeah, this is one is at Manta Field, and this one has it come up through, this one's for Manta Field. Um, the one that we approved before was for the Little League and all that stuff.
The library, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have a public property use for Byfield Community Baseball League on September 30th, or April 15th to September 30th, eight to eight. Um, I'll entertain a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Approve, and is there a second?
Second. We, we can vote on one.
Well, that was for opening day. This is for the season.
No, but we, did we vote on the one above this, that I follow this week?
Yeah.
We just voted, right?
Yeah, we just voted.
We took this one.
So, this, no, we took up, we took this one first. This is the second one, but this is, the one we approved last week was just for opening day. This is for the season.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have, um, April 15th and April 22nd, we have, um, we're going to have a, a, I don't know, we'll call it a, another meeting to discuss the, um, Municipal Building Committee. We need to come up with, so, on April 15th, um, we're going to have the, um, the meeting right here in Kent Way. The Municipal Building Committee will be giving us an update. Um... What time? The time, I think the time still needs to be continued, to be decided, because I haven't firmed that up with all of the people yet. I haven't heard back from them all, so, um, it's going to be located here. Um, at our next meeting on the 28th, we'll firm up a time for that. I'm just going to make sure that everybody can get here. And then we're going to have it here because the, um, the, it'll be on closed caption TV. It'll be, it'll be better. Now, the 22nd, that is still TBD, so, those will be on our next, our next meeting.
If I, if I make a, may I ask, um, will there be like a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, the, we just like the last, the last meeting.
The last meeting?
On March 7th.
At the library?
Yeah.
It was just a, a verbal communication? It wasn't a...
There was a PowerPoint presentation up. There was.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm sorry, I don't remember PowerPoint presentation.
It was a screen right up, all right? Thank you. Um, so, I don't think we need to vote on that, that's just a scheduling thing. Next on the agenda is an override ballot language. Um, that is...
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Did we get the final price on the, did we get the, the price on the town hall? Do we know what that, what those numbers are?
I think it's still being...
It's in, in that budget book, your, in your warrant, the, the last price that I received was $11,775, but I think they're still waiting.
That was the one, that was at the last meeting?
That was at the last meeting.
So, that hasn't changed?
No.
And we, and we haven't got an update yet?
I haven't, no.
Oh, okay.
But I think we're still, we're still waiting for that. But because this, because this is a off-year, because of the governor's budget and because of time, town meeting coming right up, we have to kind of get this off and printed and everything else. I just dropped something. So, the ballot question, this is for the question, is going to be, shall the town of Newbury be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called the amount required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay costs of designing, constructing, reconstructing, furnishing, and equipping the town hall, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto? So, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I actually have copies for everyone sitting here, Jerry.
And I'll second that, too.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
On discussion?
Yeah, we're on discussion. And Leslie, I'm meeting with the, the Board, just one second, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes. Um, okay, so, um, so, this is, it looks like, um, pardon me for the, my question, but I've just received the language, so, uh, is this in fact an override or a dead exclusion?
It's a dead exclusion.
It's a dead exclusion?
Correct.
Even though it says the language sounds like it's a, a override?
The, it's a dead exclusion. The, the language was drafted by bond counsel.
Okay, and, um, can, and it doesn't, it doesn't have a specific amount, though?
They never do.
No, not the ballot question.
No. They, the appropriation will be made at town meeting. That's where you identify the amount of the borrowing and the amount of the appropriation.
Even though, um, Article 18 has your $11,775,000?
Correct.
That's the article.
Yep. The article for town meeting.
This is, this is the ballot.
Okay.
So, this is, this is when we go to vote, or was it May 9th or something?
May 9th.
Yeah, so, this is the ballot question. This has got nothing to do with the town meeting.
And a lot of this is moving forward, because you have to print and all that stuff.[1608.83]
And a lot of this is moving forward because you have to print and all that stuff.
Yeah, we have to go to print and all that stuff, but I just want to make clear that this has happened to the town of Newbury before. We have had town meetings where I, it has, in order to have a debt exclusion, it has to pass two ways. It has to pass on the town meeting floor and it has to pass at the ballot. If it doesn't pass two ways, it doesn't, it's not approved.
Right, right.
So it has happened in the past that it has not passed on town meeting floor and the ballot still goes through, but it will be null and void. It won't, you have to have it two ways. I just want the board to be clear on that.
Okay. Okay. And can someone tell me what effect it will have on the tax rate on each individual homeowner? How much it's gonna raise their taxes?
I could tell you approximately, based on that 11,775, which is not the final number, so as we get close to the town meeting, I'd update it, but I would say somewhere around, an average property in town is a little over $600,000, valued at 600,000 now, so I would say it would be probably about 120 bucks a year.
120 dollars? Okay. So...
Over the year of the loan.
Okay. And...
Over the life of the loan, sorry.
Okay. And, but that's not the final figure you're telling me?
That's probably the most conservative. It'll likely be less than that.
Less than that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, because, yeah, I mean, why, I guess my question is, why hasn't this figure been talked about? I mean...
Well, just I didn't talk about it.
Yeah, we just...
Right. Well, yeah, but I mean... We're talking about it now.
Right, but you've been working on this issue since 2017 for the last six years and we still don't have a final figure.
Yeah, but Jerry, you're talking about construction projects, okay? So we'll pass an amount if the town passes it, and now, in May, that still won't be the final number. We won't know how much this building costs until it goes out to bid. And we actually have bids on it. It's the process of a construction project. It's just the nature of the beast.
And that the 11,775 represents a safe number and we couldn't spend more than that.
And it's not to exceed that number.
Right. Okay.
And like Bob said, I think it was 642 or something per square foot now, and I wish we had done something in 2017 because I think it was like...
Five something. 475.
Less, yeah, 475.
Um, okay. All right, I don't have any other questions for now.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of the ballot question?
Aye. Aye.
Proposed.
Proposed? Okay. Okay. Tracy, are you recording these votes? Because Julie's not here.
Uh huh.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the ballot question. Okay, next is the warrant approval. So we've already reviewed the warrant once. Is there anything, Tracy, that, those are different warrants? Do you, do you, actually do you have copies for us or...
They're in the cover of your book.
Oh, they're in the budget book?
Yep, they're in there.
Okay. So here's the warrant. So the only thing that's really changed here is that we have a number now for that, that, what article is it? 18 or something? Yeah, 11,775. So everything else in here is the same when we had the draft?
Okay. The numbers are also in Article 5, the appropriations. We didn't, if you recall, when we went through the warrant, the governor hadn't released their budget, her budget yet, and I don't believe Triton's budget was available at that time.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So they've since come out, so those numbers were completed.
Okay, that's Article 5.
Yep.
Okay.
A question?
Yes.
Want to give me Article 18, where you now plug in the 11,775,000. You said that's the only change, but isn't, isn't it different language? Because it seems very overbroad and I don't recall this language in the, in the prior ones.
Is this Article 18 you're talking about?
Yeah. To determine whether this amount should be raised by transfer from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action in relation to thereto. It seems very broad.
That language comes right out of the statute. It's provided to us by bond counsel. It's also reviewed by our legal counsel. That's the exact same language that we used when we did the borrowing for the PD and any other municipal building project would, would have similar language. Keep in mind that this is the article, so the warrant that you have before you is meant to warn the inhabitants of the town of Newbury about the business that will be taken up at the annual town meeting. Once in the meeting, motions will be made, very specific motions, so to your point, the, the motion will be made to appropriate and take funds from free cash and take funds that were left over from the municipal police station building project. So all of those funds will be used to reduce the total 11 million. We're not gonna go out to borrow all that. We need the appropriation, let's just say we have the bid in hand and it's 11 million. We need the 11 million to allow us to expend the funds. Town meeting has to give us that authority, but how we pay for it will be the, from the free cash that we've saved, the unexpended appropriation balance for the police station, and also the balance would be borrowed. That piece would be the debt exclusion that we talked about.
Any further questions?
So Article 18, is that the debt exclusion question?
The question will be on the ballot. That's the appropriation, if you will. That's giving us the ability to spend the money, whereas the author, it also provides an authorization to borrow, and just so you're all aware, that requires a two-thirds vote of, of those present at town meeting. And the ballot question allows us to override 2 and 1/2, so for that amount. So each, each year, again, these are all estimates, but based on what we're looking at now, what the municipal building committee has provided to date, we're looking at annual debt service payments somewhere in the range of 475,000 a year. You know, a lot will depend, those are bids. We'll go out to bid and hopefully get a very good interest rate on our bonds, so that could be reduced. I'm, I'm carrying a 5% interest rate now based on what the market has been yielding, but with our AAA bond rating, hopefully we'll secure even better. So the numbers that we're dealing with and we're talking about are conservative on the high side, and I expect between now and town meeting, given more detailed information from the municipal building committee, they'll likely come down.
Yeah. Any further questions? Jeff? Jerry? Dana?
No.
Jaya? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Please.
May I?
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Can I just add something to my vote?
You want to just add a comment?
Well, I'm sorry, I probably should have said this before. I'm, I'm voting, I just want everybody to know, I'm voting in favor of this because I think that the citizens of the town should be able to make a decision on whether, on whether they want to build this town hall or not.
Well, it is, they're...
And, and I just feel as though that, you know, being here, I, I don't know, maybe it is up to me to either stop it or let it continue, but being here, I want to give the citizens an opportunity to vote. And that's, and that's why I'm voting in favor of this.
That's why the stuff goes to town meeting and the ballot.
Right.
Right.
All right, so under open is, there is none. Is there a town administrator's report, Tracy?
Just briefly, I did mention to you at the last meeting, but wanted to say it again because I don't know that everyone heard, but with the exception of our police station debt service, we have retired, all of Newbury's debt has been completely paid off to date. The border to Boston Trail...
Tracy, say that again. I've been here a while and I want to hear that again.
All of our debt, with the exception of the police station, what's, we've just built, has been paid off.
Excuse me, is that, is that the 475,000 debt here you just mentioned earlier?
No, we won't borrow that unless the project is approved. Yeah.
So, so that's, that's not the police station debt? That's the anticipated debt?
For the town hall. Yes, yes.
I would just add that we had always said when we pay off our debt, that's a perfect time to really do the police station and town hall, so we're right on schedule.
Yep.
Wow.
The, we've been notified of a $250,000 earmark or grant for the design of the boardwalk section of the border to Boston Trail, so I'd need your acceptance of vote to accept that.
And that's on Parker Street? Tracy?
Parker River.
Oh, where am I?
Yeah. Why don't you give, yeah.
Okay, so that's not the...
The boardwalk section of Parker River.
This is, this is a project that started a long time ago.
Okay, now I understand, yep.
Boxford, Georgetown.
Yep, yep.
And this specifically is the...
There is a beaver dam, which back in 2020 caused a breach in the rail bed very close to the Georgetown line, and so there was a meeting actually right before COVID. It was on March 5th. We went out there to look at the breach.
I vaguely remember this.
Yeah.
Was the breach on the Parker River?
It was right at the Parker River Beaver Dam just created the overflow in the railroad bed, and so there was a meeting that included Pat Huckery and Mass DOT and conservation agents. Doug Packer was there to look at that, and after some discussion, I guess it was decided at Mass DOT, the best option would be to actually build a boardwalk around that for pedestrians and bicyclists, and National Grid would still drive over the breach, as they talked about doing beaver deceivers and all kinds of other things. And the estimated cost of that boardwalk is roughly $250,000. And so this earmark came through Seth Moulton's office, and as part of a larger earmark, it's 1.2 million that I think went to Marblehead, Boxford, Georgetown, and us.
So it's a federal grant?
So it's, it's...
That piece of it is federal, and then there's also a $62,500 state match, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, there, I think there was a match required and the state is providing.
So...
Providing that.
Because I used to be on that committee years ago and watch that piece. Was there a culvert there?
Not in that location, but it is at a point where the river comes down and goes right along the railroad bed. And it's on the other side.
So they'll put beaver deceivers because won't, will they fix the whole of the breach?
The idea is to leave the breach, correct? Because the beaver deceivers are a real pain to...
Yeah, they decided it really wouldn't be a functional way to deal with it.
So if they drive out to fix anything and do anything, they'll go either way, so there won't be vehicular traffic that will go over the breach?
They, it will go over the breach. It's shallow enough that they feel their vehicles can go over.
Now, I'm understanding, so it's like a wea.
Right, right. But pedestrians will have the boardwalk and bicyclists.
We'll see how much that, how are they stopping that from continuing on the next storm of that magnitude or whatever?
That I, I...
I think the plan's to let it happen.
And deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper or whatever.
Let it go back to the way...
The beavers, we're gonna leave it up to the beavers to take care of it.
They're probably smarter than we are sometimes, Steve.
So, may I ask you, this is, I wasn't on the board when this first came. So the goal is to be able to, to use the river, not the riverbed, the train track?
The old, the old railroad.
To get from all, through all the communities to Boston?
Yeah, it actually starts down in Danvers.
Okay.
And up to New Hampshire. So various parts of it have done, like Topsfield is done, Salisbury's done, Newbury Port's effectively done with the Clipper City Rail Trail. Georgetown South, there are two segments in Georgetown. One is Georgetown South and Boxford. I think that's the next that's really being actively worked on. Ours is kind of one of the last sections, so that's Georgetown, Newbury up to Byfield.
Does the walkway have steps or is it flat?
I haven't seen, they haven't, as far as I know, they haven't started any design on it.
I mean, it's because it's also a bikeway, too, so...
It's a bikeway as well, so it's gonna have to be, right. It has to be ADA accessible and...
And this money will pay for the design work?
For the design work.
Yep.
All right, so any other questions?
I...
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
I don't mean to put you on this part. Was there a rationale as to why they don't fix it?
You know, that was really all at Mass DOT. I think they, they talked about a lot of different solutions and this was the one that they felt was gonna be the best and...
So be it.
Beaver, beaver deceivers need almost daily maintenance.
Of course they do. But I'm just wondering with all the ability to mitigate water, I, I, it's not for me to ponder over.
Yes. If it's, if it's a real trail, bike trail, are they gonna be hot topping it because it's grass now?
The plan is to, yes, to asphalt hot top it. Yeah.
Thank you, Martha. Do you want to need a motion from us?
Yep.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and lastly, I have a request from the Newbury Recreation Commission Committee for 26,000 for a comprehensive plan of the Central Street Playing Field Recreation Area. Their, their goal is to move forward with the playground that they've talked about, but they, before they just try and site it, they'd, they'd like to get a comprehensive plan of what's going to go where in that area. So they're requesting 26,000 of ARPA funds to move forward with the design.
Entertain a motion? A motion and a second.
Yep. I, I motion to approve the release of the ARPA funds for the Manta Field.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Jerry?
Isn't there only 17,000 left in the ARPA fund? So where would the...
There are other, so what happens with the ARPA funds is you appropriate a certain amount, and then the department manager, whoever it is, would go out to bid for certain items, and if it comes in less, then those funds go back into the ARPA pool, and I think right now we've got about 28,000.
Dana, did you have a question?
I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
All right. Don't they have funds for, for, for this plan from the, in the annual budget? Isn't it like 50,000?
That funds all of the field maintenance for the year, so they don't have any...
They have a basketball court and, and the fields that they have to maintain, and that's like their own revolving, that's a revolving fund? So that's, that's what they use to do all that. It's 28,000 would wipe them out.
Fertilization, sprinklers, that's most of it.
Dana, no. Are you done, Jerry?
You, you mentioned a playground. Is this specifically for a playground or is it, or is it to determine whether that's what we're gonna build or not?
No, basically, this plan evaluates the property, so say they don't build a playground somewhere and then in five years, it's like, oh, we shouldn't have put it there.
Right.
That's the idea of this overall plan.
Because I saw something running around about putting pickleball on the basketball court.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that all in the same package? Is, is that part of the evaluation?
Well, the, the basketball court's already built. They already have that. So they've expended, they, of their own monies that they have in their, in their revolving fund, a couple thousand dollars to buy the equipment for pickleball because the Council on Aging has a need for it. So that's something else that's, that's in addition to, to this.
Yeah, but I mean, it's all, is it all one big conglomerate as far as the planning process goes?
Well, that's what...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other question? You good, Jerry? Jaya?
I'm good.
All right. All in favor?